Including extended day services for up to 24 students delivered by the EEU in the amount of $820,276.80. Educational services for up to 18 kindergarten students delivered by the EEU for the amount of $314,581.83. And technical support and training to staff and services to students in identified classrooms within Seattle Public Schools in the amount of $70,383. These services are to be provided in the form of the draft interagency agreements attached to the Board Action Report. The superintendent is authorized to make minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary and to take any necessary actions to implement the contracts/agreements.
I second the motion.
I'd like to call on the committee chair of Curriculum and Instruction.
I'm excited to share that this motion was discussed at the April 4th CNI committee meeting and was moved forward to the full board for introduction on April 20th.
Is there any questions, comments on this item? I see none. Ms. Ritchie, the vote?
Director Pinkham.
Aye.
Director Blanford.
Aye.
Director Burke.
Aye.
Director Geary.
Aye.
Director Harris.
Aye.
Director Peters.
Aye.
And Director Patu.
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Now, we're going into our introduction items. Board self-evaluation. The motion was discussed at the executive committee meeting on April 7th, 2016, as well as a work session on April 7th, 2016. The executive committee reviewed the motion and moved the item forward for consideration by the full board pending in the work session happening on the same day in the evening. Any questions? Director Geary?
Okay, we are introducing this at this point. As you mentioned, the board held a work session on April 7th to offer feedback on the board's SMART goals for 2015-16 and the evaluation instrument and rubric from 2014-15. As many are aware, we have four new board members and just becoming familiar with this instrument has taken us time and I would say that we are still in the process of becoming familiar with it and trying to see how it plays out. We discussed carrying forward three of the SMART goals from 2014-15 with revisions to the goal and implementation plan language and maintaining the 2014-15 evaluation instrument and rubric. I believe we are carrying forward four, but...
Yeah, we are.
Yeah, it's four, not three. Director Patu and I volunteered to revise the goals and implementation plans based on the feedback received. Directors were provided additional opportunity for feedback prior to introduction, so Director Patu and I, we did meet and went over them with an eye to maintaining the goals that had been worked on before, but making them more concrete in application to give the new board members an opportunity to work through the goal process in a short, since we have a shorter amount of time since this will be reviewed come November. The goals are limited in number and scope due to the shortened evaluation cycles, I said, because we'll conduct our self-evaluation in November. And it is also, we'll also be looking at the goals in September again with an eye to the fact that we will be considering whether or not to align our evaluation schedule to that of the superintendent and therefore in September, we could look at introducing new goals that would run if we decide to do that through June. And so this gives us an opportunity to do abbreviated goals with the idea that we will flesh out and make fuller goals for ourselves when we have a longer cycle to consider them in. This item will be on the May 18th agenda for action.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Director Burke?
Just a quick comment to thank Director Geary and Director Patu for taking this on. I think we had a work session around this and for a new member of the school board just getting into it and trying to understand, well, how will this apply? How will we use this tool was a pretty significant thing. So I appreciate the time that you took to do that and any ongoing guidance that you can provide us on how to make sure that we're keeping eyes on the prize during that, during the next upcoming months.
Director Geary?
And along the same lines, I think we need to give credit to the directors that preceded us who really did the heavy lifting in creating these goals. And this is just an opportunity for us to learn from all of their work and have a chance to put it into practice in a way that will be manageable and more focused as we're in a learning mode. But thank you for that work and I hope you three will be available to us to guide us in implementing them.
All right, we're going to our second introduction items. Department of Technology Services, PTA 4 project loan from community schools funding the capital eligible program. Can we hear from the Audit and Finance Chair?
All right, that would be me. Let's see. Okay, this came to the Audit and Finance Committee meeting on March 10th. We reviewed the motion and moved it forward to the full board with the recommendation for approval.
Thank you.
Hi, Carmen Ram, Chief Information Officer. And one of the reasons that this was brought to the Audit and Finance Committee on March 10th and is now just being brought to the, to the board was because we wanted to take the time to really lay out the spending plan and show how we would be utilizing this funding, which ones of the 20, I keep, 23 different funding areas within the BTA 4 levy that we would be utilizing this as we move forward. So we've got a short PowerPoint presentation here to kind of go over that. I'm assuming that you guys can see it up above there. I know you've also got copies of it. So the thing that's really important to point out here is, I'm going to be pointing here with my pointer and you guys can't see it, so I apologize for that, is that within the BTA and within the levy structure in the state of Washington, levies for technology are not only used for modernization and projects, they can also be used, and they are used extensively for operational and maintenance support. It's one of the only areas that that can be done in. So as a result of that, we rely on a lot of the BTA 4 levy for operations and support. And the reason we want to point that out is because historically, within these levies, even though they're six-year levies, the funding with, for the technology has been front-loaded. We've spent that technology in the first three years with the understanding and the hope that the follow-on levies would be there to provide that funding. When this levy was put together, when we put together the funding package last year and presented it to the board at that time, it was built on the premise that it would be a three-year funding, excuse me, a three-year expense. So if we look at the first graph here, this is the summary of the entire $104.65 million. What you can see is that, you know, if we're going to spend this in three years, then we're going to get a lot of project work done because we're going to be spending out in the levy years about approximately $30 million a year. The, the bridge funding is for the remainder of FY '16. It's from now until September. And that provides us the opportunity to really start the planning, to bring in the project management, to get the requirements defined, and to do a lot of the other preparation work so that we're not waiting until the funding comes in. And then we're trying to do six months of really dedicated and well-thought-out process improvement and reengineering instead of trying to cram that into a couple of months because everyone will be excited to get these things in place. We can take the right amount of time, bring in the right resources, talk to the right groups around the district, and make sure that we're, we're reengineering the processes correctly. And then we really start working on that in FY '17, which is next year, which is what I call year zero because it really isn't that first year of the levy yet, but because levy funding is collected throughout the year, property taxes, we, we are estimated to get about $9 million for technology in FY '17. And then the bulk of it obviously comes in in FY '18, '19, and '20. And you can see here that if we have to stretch that out over six years, we really lose all of the funding for the major projects that we've got identified. The point-of-sale system, the new budget system, the, the incredible increases in technology in our schools because more of it has to go toward operations and maintenance, to pay the internet bill, to pay the software licensing bills, to pay the, you know, the web bill and everything that we've got along there to, just to keep our systems running. So if we go on to the next slide, you know, really quickly, we broke this down for each one of the areas, and so there's four per page, but some, some of the products would get more money because if you've got to stretch that operations out over six years, they're going to get more money. It doesn't mean that's a good thing, it just means they're going to absorb more money. So School, Technology Services, and Support, everybody back there can see the little red light, sorry. We know that we need to increase from 50 technicians, our goal is to increase to about 30 technicians. You know, we're not going to get to that level if we stretch this out over six years. And, and, but we are going to need to increase that support without a doubt. So in this area, we're going to be probably taking up approximately, you know, two and a quarter more million dollars. And I, and if you want me to, I'll go through each one of these, but you probably don't need me to unless you've got some questions. If you look at the Academic Classroom Instructional Technology Library Support, what that is is that's the instructional technologist that worked for Eric Caldwell. These are the certified technology experts who are out in the field, working with the, with the teachers and the educators in the classroom on how to utilize that technology and apply it in the classroom. And, and so, you know, they need to be funded for all six years. And then the faculty, staff, this is one, the faculty, new technology, this is one where we're not cutting hardly any funding because the instructors and the educators in our district right now have such old technology that we have to get that replaced. And so there's not a lot of difference in this area. And then something that we, we put in this year, and this is something that I utilized at the university where I was at, that we called the Academic Software Replacement and Upgrade Support. That was something new we added to the levy. And what that was, was when we're going to Windows 10 or maybe Windows 12 down the road or whenever, and the schools are saying, but we don't have the funding to replace this piece of software in our biology lab, it only runs on Windows 7, we would have funding to assist them in making those transitions. And that, in order to make this balance out, really goes to zero and we're, we're back to the situation we're at today, which, which is not good and it's not good for our students and our, and our academics. Other areas, a huge hit to the new computers going into our labs and classrooms. That's where we've got to absorb the funding and, and, and take it back so that we can pay all the other maintenance bills going out. And then there's Classroom Audio Visual and Distance Education. And then if we go into more of our central business systems, these are getting the brunt of the benefit, these are getting the most additional funding, which is not what we want to have happen. Our Student Information System, this isn't going to make Director Harris happy, but you know, that blue right there is our point-of-sale system. You know, that's the funding that's going to put our point-of-sale system in, but instead, we're paying the licensing bills, we're paying all the, all of the other things. We've got to pay our, our, our software licenses, and one of those is going to come up in the next board intro item. Our business systems, the same thing, our new budget and finance system and everything that, that are, that are the blue items. And then the administrative staff, we have a lot of administrative staff offices in the John Stanford Center, they also need new technology, they're going to have to absorb that out of their own budgets. Web communications, data reporting, again, all the project funding would be spread out over six years, we'd have to go toward operations and maintenance. And then if we get into, point it that way, if we get into our infrastructure, the local area networks, this again goes right back to the schools. The local area network improvements are really out in the schools because we put in state-of-the-art wireless, but a lot of the older schools have poor wiring in the walls, they don't have the, the hardwired and equipment into the comm rooms and things like that that, that they need, it's getting older, so that requires a replacement out there. Our disaster recovery and security, and then I'll go on to this one, which is our metropolitan area network. That is the network that connects all of our schools together. That is the fiber ring that runs throughout the city and goes to all of our schools and connects them together. It is old, it's, it is, it is in a state of disrepair, it is far beyond end of life, and so we really need to modernize that. And in this model, we don't, excuse me. And then our telecommunications, our phone infrastructure, the same way. And the last graph I put up here was just to show that in Bex 4, with the current levy that we're in right now, the technology had seven, had $51 million, $51, $52 million. And you divide that over three years, you get $17 million a year. So I use $51 million because it's easier math. We have bought $102 million, $104 million in BTA 4. If we spread that over six years, it's $17 million a year. But what does that $17 million buy us? Well, the $17 million that we had last year in FY '15 is equivalent to a little over $10 million out here in FY '23 if we've got to stretch that out. And, and what $17 million buys us today, looking at it in the other direction, we would require, oh, I knew I should have wore better glasses, $27 million out here in FY '23 in order to fund that same amount. So it really does put us at a disadvantage and we don't have the same level of funding we actually have, far less because of the time value of money. So that's why the, the, the spending is condensed down to three years and that's why this bridge loan or this, this loan they're asking for of $2.5 million, which the majority of it will go to the technology projects, and as the bar reports, a portion of it will also go to the debt reduction, part of the other capital that's to pay off the computer leases for Queen Anne and Bourne K-12 and a few of the other schools that have leases that we want to, we want to eliminate that debt, so.
Any questions from any of the board? Director Blanford?
So that was a lot of information and I'm not sure how, if I'm going to phrase this correct, this question correctly, but I'll try. I'm concerned about, you've listed what I see as several opportunity costs in accelerating the spending rather than peanut buttering it over the time of the levy, accelerating it to, or front-loading it to the first part of the levy, right? And the, the time, the time value of money is a primary one because I see, it's pretty easy to see on this chart that we need $27 million to do what we can do with $17 million in the first year, if I, if I understand what you said correctly.
Yeah, and that sort of goes over nine years because that goes back to the beginning of Bex 4 all to the end of BTA 4.
So nine years instead of four years, or instead of seven years?
Right.
But, but the premise that I made is correct?
Correct.
That it's, the time value of money means we need a lot more money at the end of it than we would be able to, we'd be able to buy a bigger basket in the earlier years than we would in the later years?
That's correct.
Are there other opportunity costs that are associated with us accelerating the spending beyond what you've shared?
There's always opportunity costs, some of them that would come to mind is, you know, we've got a lot of old equipment out there and the sooner we can replace that old equipment, you know, the less technicians that we're going to need supporting that equipment because as you, as you invest more in new technology, you, you, you have less maintenance and repair and things like that going on. The point-of-sale system is, is a huge improvement to the schools and the audit finding and the things that come out of that. So those are the things that we've really got to invest our money in, and the sooner we can get those investments made, I think the better off we are, so.
But I, I'm coming at it from the other direction, which is that spending the dollars earlier, obviously we can buy a bigger basket with, with the dollars if they're spent earlier. What, what other opportunity costs, meaning what other things, what other variables do we need to consider? What things do we lose as a result of spending early rather than later?
I don't think we, we lose anything by spending earlier rather than later. I think we're simply saying that, that, you know, we're not going to like, as the terminology, you use peanut butter it out over the long range. And as a result of that, you know, the follow-on funding will pay the, the operations and maintenance costs and hopefully by investing in the new technology earlier, we can reduce the, the operations and maintenance costs in the, in the longer years and get more bang for our buck in the outer years too, so.
If I may, Stephen Nielsen, Deputy Superintendent, the, the other built-in assumption on this, and this has been planned since its inception, so this is not new nor is this unusual for our use of BTA levies, is what Carmen said at the very beginning in that we run a six-year levy and we plan on rolling those over with the expenditures taking place in three years. So the largest risk that we take, which is the answer of the question of what is our opportunity cost, is that we're funding activities with the assumption that either the state fully funds this for basic ed and/or voters continue to have the ability to support us through these levies. And without one of those two or a combination of both, we are at very, very, very large risk. So that is, that is the big risk in, in all of our minds. Nevertheless, that is how we operate.
And is there an opportunity cost in buying, given the fact that technology changes so quickly, is there an opportunity cost in buying something early and then it becoming stale midway through the, through the period? Does that question make sense?
Well, yeah, I understand the question. It kind of goes back to something I've heard years ago with, with regards to technology. If you wait for state-of-the-art, you'll never buy. Because it's always changing so fast. I would think that, you know, the, you know, the, the question you just asked would almost be a proponent for, you know, let's get something in there now because if we wait, we're still going to be continually behind the curve. We're still going to be, there's always going to be something better the next year and the next year and the next year. And, and the, the goal, I think for us is, is to get the benefit into the schools and to get the equipment into the hands of the students that they need and get the point-of-sale system out there so, so that we're mitigating the, the problems that, that the schools are facing.
If I can ask one more follow-up question, it would be, are there, it seems to me that other districts would be in a similar situation, that we're not alone. Are other districts actually trying to accelerate their spending for technology that you know of?
I'm not sure if the word is accelerate their spending for technology. We're, we're accelerating the levy, you know, but other districts have had technology levies for many years. If you take Canton, Bellevue, and some of the others in Mercer Island, they've had technology levies for a long time, so they're not accelerating it because they haven't been behind the curve, you know, like we have, so.
Oh, okay, okay. So there are no other districts that you know of that, I won't use the word accelerate, but are taking similar action to the action that we're taking?
Not that I'm aware of. I don't know of any of them that have other six-year windows and are crunching it down to three, so.
Director Burke?
I want to sort of start with a simplistic question, which is just an interpretation on my part, and please tell me if I, if I get this correctly or not. We're looking at the, the three-year versus the six-year implementation scenarios where the three-year, we, we essentially front-load some of these, what we, what we see as higher-value investments.
Correct.
In the, if we do that, in the remaining three years, does that mean that we're going to see a budget drop and that there will, you know, the, the, I guess, are we going to become accustomed to these higher spend levels, which will make it harder to operate in the subsequent three years? Do I, does that make sense?
It, it makes sense. I understand what you're saying. And, you know, right now, in talking with, with Richard Best and Flip and the people putting together, you know, already starting a plan for the BTA 5 levy, we recommend that, that we're going to want to maintain a levy for technology at the level we have in BTA 4 or higher, but not necessarily as a result of this, but to continue to, you know, put more computers into the hands of the students if, if a one-to-one program was in our future. But some of this modernization, if we can modernize the network, if we can modernize the metropolitan area network, those, those are, are infrequent costs, you know, that once we do the project, then hopefully our maintenance costs will lower for the future to maintain these and we won't have to be replacing that technology again for 10 or 15 years. But it doesn't mean something else isn't going to come along that we foresee that that has to be done, so.
Okay. Couple of specific questions. Do we have a, sort of a district standard obsolescence cycle for our building hardware? You can, you can go with wish list and then reality.
You know, our...
That's the way we do it in our office.
The current, the current benchmark we're using right now for replacing computers in the classrooms is around five to six years. And, and, and we want to, the goal would be to get that down to four, which is what we see for most one-to-one programs where students come in in the, you know, in the freshman year and they, and they get a computer and it lasts through their senior year and things like that. So we're trying to get that down to a four-year refreshment cycle. But right now, we're at about five or six. And when we went out with the, with the current refresh that's going on right now, we were at about seven years, so.
Okay. And then following up Director Blanford's line of inquiry, I think there's, there's consideration for obsolescence cycles or, or technology changes where if we front-load, we may miss an opportunity to capitalize on something. And I absolutely understand that you can't wait forever, you have to, you have to make a decision and act on it. I'm, I'm wondering if we see, there's a time value of money factor, but there's also a capital cost of technology that's diminishing year by year. And I'm curious if that's a trend which is offsets the, the time value of money to the point where that becomes sort of a moot question, especially for when I think of the, you know, the student and classroom computing. We, we need to be very deliberate about how we sort of stretch that money out and, and leverage it.
I think those are really fair questions. I would point, I would point out that with, with projects like the point-of-sale system and projects like the, the, the new public budget and finance system within SAP, if we go with that module or other ones, the vast majority of the cost of those projects is not the product, it's the labor and the consulting to put them in. And those are not going down, as you know, those are going up 5%, 6% a year. So the sooner that, you know, you can, you can, you can handle that, the better. Yes, laptop computers are going down, you know, $25 a year or something like that, but we're down to right now where we're out doing an RFP for cloud book computers, which Microsoft's competition with the Chromebook, to $250. You're not going to see much of a reduction in those. What you're going to see is next year for 250, you might get the next iteration of that product or a little bit better. And, and it's simply a matter of, you know, how long do you want to walk to work before you invest in the car? You know, I mean, it's, you know, pretty soon you've got to, you've got to take the plunge and you've got to, and you've got to make the decision to move forward. But a lot of what you see up here really is labor cost. I've had a lot of people come to me over the years and say, well, you can get this product for free, it's freeware. Of course it's freeware and it's, it's open source, but that's 10% of the cost of the project. It's the labor, it's the consulting, it's all the in-house staff working, things like that to put it in place, and then is there training available and, and support? And, and one example that you gave there, you know, you know, waiting for the next iteration, we did that when we put wireless in the school and I'm really proud we did that. When we first were moving forward with the school wireless project, you know, the, the bids were for 802.11N, which for most people probably don't mean anything, but that was the current standard for wireless. And we chose to hold off a little bit and go out and rebid to get 802.11AC, which was state-of-the-art, nobody was putting in, it was cutting-edge. We did that and we are reaping the benefits for it. So it's kind of situations that we got to take on a case-by-case basis and decide, is it better to wait or, or do we pull the trigger now?
Just to close, I, I appreciate that level of deliberate thought because I think that's the way that when we're considering this, we have to look at high-value projects that have high impact. My, probably my biggest point of, of concern is around the student and classroom computing modernization, if that's something we should pace out more deliberately.
Director Harris?
You said something about a one-to-one model. Can you put that into a few sentences because that seems to have significant educational philosophy, policy issues?
A, a one-to-one model is simply, you know, if it's the right thing for Seattle Public Schools, I don't make that decision, but if it's, but a one-to-one model is each student getting a district-provided computer. We have a couple of areas where there are one-to-one, the, the flagship for our district is at, is at the Cleveland STEM Program at Cleveland High School, where every student gets a computer when they come in. And, you know, we have a district of 40% free and reduced lunch, we have a district where we pride ourselves in promoting equity. And when I'm out meeting with parents, when I'm out in the community, a couple of weeks ago, we met with CSEC, and that's a lot of what, what you hear is, you know, the students who don't have access to the technology, they don't have access to it at home. And so, you know, through the cities... And so, you know, through the city's, a digital equity program, where we're trying to make sure that homes have broadband access, and through programs that, that we can do, if, again, if it's right for the curriculum and the funding to, to provide those services, it's like providing a textbook, so.
Director Gary?
I guess the part that's concerning to me is I do understand, you know, some of these front-loading costs to get the benefit of them over time, but if a worst-case scenario came into effect, then we'd have to find the money to feed those orange lines, and all of a sudden, technology, I, I guess that's the, that's the piece that is concerning to me. If we can't continue to keep it funded, then we'll start having to pull money out of education, other education areas.
Yeah, and that really, that-
And programs.
Excuse me.
And it just sort of terrifies me that we're not putting away, this doesn't seem to have any type of rainy day plan embedded in it.
Terrify may be a legitimate concern. That, that, this is why McCleary matters, and we have figured out a way in Seattle, and it's worth noting that the way we run our levies is very unusual. No other district in the state does it the way we do, and that is because we have such a strong tax base and strong voter approval here. So the terrifying part is what happens if the legislature changes the levy structure. That said, I look at it as, as a terrifying opportunity, and I say that with dead certainty, in that it, we are able to then say to our stakeholders, our voters, our legislators, this is how you have to continue funding in some manner in order to maintain basic education. The other thing that I would say that's, that's worth noting here is that this plan does not mean that we would overspend the amount that the BTA has approved. It's just a matter of beginning the work before we meet collections. And if I may, I would, and we've talked about this at the Audit and Finance Committee, we do have the cash flow, so there is not a challenge there. So the two major assumptions are, is that we would be able to collect revenue from levy sources in the future, as we do now, and/or we get state funding, and we live within our budget.
Director Peters?
My colleagues have asked a lot of really good questions, and some of which were on my list as well, so I'll just focus on the fact that we're heading towards some pretty turbulent waters financially. You know, the Superintendent Nyland mentioned these at the beginning of the meeting, and beginning with fiscal year 2017, I believe. So knowing that, I mean, knowing that we're headed towards a potential levy cliff, which is reducing our levy funding by $25 million, the per pupil inflator was not adjusted, so we will, or it was adjusted, and we will lose $6 million. Is there a risk of front-loading this kind of funds, knowing that we're heading into this sort of fiscal environment?
The levy cliff applies to the general maintenance and operations levy. It does not apply to either VEX or BTA.
Okay.
And the calculations for those collections are completely different.
Okay. So this particular source of funding would not be influenced by those issues?
Under current law, that is correct.
Okay.
Director Gary?
Along those same lines, I see that we've parsed out the money coming from different sources, going to different things. But are there things that, that will be impacted by the levy cliff that we could legitimately spend some of this money on backfilling, even though we don't do it now? Or is it by the nature of what these things are, they don't cross over?
There is some crossover in the use of BTA funds, and the easiest way to think about it is what do other districts do? For example, if you are another district that does not have a BTA-type levy, and you're running your technology off of your maintenance and operations levy, then there are, of course, some crossovers. There are also complete restrictions around capital funds, so you cannot transfer capital funds to the general fund, so those restrictions apply here. Technology has to fit within certain parameters, as, as described in current law. That said, however, there are some pieces of what we do that are funded through the BTA levy that could be funded through a regular EPO levy if we didn't have a BTA levy. It just certainly wouldn't be at that volume. And is that clear or not?
That's clear. I'm just wondering, are there things that we're, I get all the jargon wrong. Are there things that we're funding, are there, are we funding some technology out of the money that is going to be disappearing that we could backfill in?
No.
Okay.
Director Harris?
Deputy Superintendent, you said under quote "current law," I think, four times. Given the fact that our negligent friends in Olympia are doing gymnastics with school funding and recalibrating, if you will, current ways of doing business, or at least bringing those up for discussion, knowing you don't have a crystal ball, but also knowing you've got 30 years of watching what's going on down in Olympia, do you see our friends in Olympia changing the levy structures in the next couple of years?
I do. Now, let, and I want to be very clear, it's a very, very good question. The levy structure that has been anticipated to change is based upon the McCleary decision, and the levy structure in question, based on McCleary, are EP and O levies. The McCleary decision will cause some kind of action, or not, in Olympia. There is nothing in the McCleary decision, and this is the key point to your question, that references capital levies or technology levies. They are separate and apart from any legal standing that the court is holding to the legislature. So, that said, one could project, and it is simply a projection, that BTA levies, capital levies, et cetera, or, or bond issues are outside of that parameter. Now, also my opinion, and it is simply me speaking from my experience in Olympia and here, is there's a, a political reality and an optical issue that it wouldn't strike me as wise for the legislature to take that on until they fully address the McCleary issue, because they would just make matters worse, and most of them want to get re-elected.
I definitely thank you for providing this information. I just kind of want to get some clarification here, as far as when it says something here on the, as far as it being an interest-free loan. How does that work out, as far as we take money from one pot and then put it in another, and what's happening, what would have collected there if that money stayed and we're not reimbursing it in a sense at full rate? Is that, is this something common that we do?
Well, the, the way this works is it's, it's technically an inter-fund loan, and our cash that we have is held by King County, and that's by statute. So we are investing our public resources, the cash that we have, that Director Peters and the other members of the Audit and Finance Committee review on a monthly basis, or as a part of our regular cash reconciliation, is managed in a very conservative manner. So I'm now going to do this from a memory point, and I know that I will be wrong. That said, I'm close, and we are getting a return of about eight tenths or so percent on our investments in the King County investment pool. It may be less than that now, or slightly different than that. It is not a substantial amount of money. And said differently, the cost of inflation is higher than what we're getting in return by, by a substantial amount.
Okay, so you're looking at that to kind of counterbalance of what we would have collected in interest if we kept it there.
Right.
We're picking up in value now, okay.
Director Burke?
This is probably a little bit larger scope than what we're discussing, so I'll try to keep it brief, but there's, technology has a lot of dollars associated with it, and I understand, within the levy, we have to, we have a, an obligation to the voting community to put it in the proper allocation categories. What, what concerns me is that the choices we make, based on those categories, I'll, I'll put an example in place. I visited a school which is space-impacted, and they were describing the different scenarios they had to, you know, to, to restructure the school or to, you know, to accommodate the additional growth. And the, you know, one of the questions was, can you reconstitute the classrooms and restructure it in a way that you can put more kids in the same space? And the feedback that I had gotten was, well, there's a cost to do that, and it's primarily a technology and infrastructure cost for, you know, overhead, Wi-Fi, AV, I'm not exactly sure what it was. So this is very kind of theoretical, but because that cost was, there was no cost centered where that would be viable, the, the school was directed that they would most likely have to, according to board guidance, before they could reconstitute any of their classrooms, they would have to lose space for before and after care or pre-K. And so my concern is, are there small amounts of this that we can apply to some of our space-impacted or capacity-impacted schools, or are we prohibited from doing that?
So let me try to answer that like this. I'm gonna, I'm gonna see, there's Richard back there, and the other night, the other night I was-
I see this.
The other night, no, well, the, the way I would answer that is to say-
Be stopped.
Okay, all right, all right, all right.
Sorry. That's a complicated question, and at the macro level, the answer is no. And I would prefer to leave it at that and perhaps a great, a greater discussion at Audit and Finance. And, and if we want to go there, we can. I'm certainly not trying to avoid it, but it, the space issues and what that means are mostly related to VEX kinds of things rather than BTA. So that's why I'd like to just hold it at that point, because it's a separate topic with, and I say that, of, of course, only to answer if, if that's of your pleasure.
Superintendent Nyland?
Yes, I want to back up a while. I need a picture or a, a map here, I guess. So the, the monies that we're currently running out of came from the last VEX levy, and they're spent over three years. The money that we're now spending, want to spend, forward spend, I guess, a little bit, are three years of the BTA six-year levy. When the technology money runs out, three years from now, we'll be offering to the voters another VEX levy, and we'll have as part of that, technology. So, I mean, essentially, we've got technology on a three-year renewable cycle. So I don't know that the, yeah, what is it? No man's life is safe when the legislature is in session, so I understand. But it, it is business as usual for what we have been doing for many, many years. Thanks to voter approval, the per-year basis for this three-year chunk that we have coming up is bigger than the per-year basis of technology that we have that's expiring. So the real issue here in my mind is not about all of that future stuff. It is out there, and it is a little bit scary. As Stephen indicated, I don't think that our capital levies will be at risk to McCleary. They, they've got to solve regular levies, they've got to solve salaries, they've got to solve revenue. They don't have time to worry about capital levies. So I think, for me, the, the issue is, how much of the three years' funding do we want to put into this interest-free loan to allow a jumpstart on getting some of this important work started, which I think is, is a great idea, as long as we don't go crazy over it and spend too much too soon and not be able to make it through the three-year commitment that we have out there.
And we're not spending anything in the first couple of years of the bridge loan that, that wouldn't get spent later. It's, it's not a matter of, oh, because we spent this, we don't have money, you know, we don't have money later. It's simply a matter of moving the schedules up a little bit on some of these very, very critical projects that we've all been, you know, talking about for, at least, you know, for the over two years that I've been here, so.
Director Gary?
So then, when does the bridge loan get paid back in that scheme?
According to, in this scheme, we're looking at about, if you, if you look at the first two blue columns there, they add up to about $9 million, and that's how much money we anticipate, that I've been told, that, that the technology levy would take in in FY17. So by the end of FY17, which is where the bar says it has to be repaid, we would, we would be repaying that, because we would get a, take the loan in FY16 this year, we'd get $9 million in FY17, we'd spend 7.4, and we'd have enough to repay the loan.
Bar in, in FY16, the 1.49 million, that is essentially what we're looking at allocating the, the not-to-exceed amount in this transfer for, so that gives a little bit of headroom. Is that correct?
There's, there's two things in the loan that's being asked for, and they're itemized out in the loan, and it's not all here, okay?
Okay.
The 1.49 million goes to the technology portion. There's another 0.5 million, as I mentioned earlier, that goes to pay off the leases on the computers as part of the debt mitigation, and then the, the bar went in at 2.5 million in case there were, you know, other things that we could get our technicians into the schools quicker as we're trying to ramp up our technicians. The sooner that we can, that we can start putting new computers in the schools for the teachers, the educators, the better. So if we can accelerate any of that, so I looked at that as kind of a reserve pot there.
Thank you. Our next introduction item, one-year agreement extension with PCMG for Microsoft and Moment for Education Solutions. Can we hear from the Operations Chair?
Operations Committee met on the 21st of April and heard this item and moved it forward to the board for approval.
Thank you. Any questions?
Carmen Ram, again, Chief Information Officer. This is the, the, the bar is to pay our annual licensing for all of our suite of Microsoft products, and, you know, just really quickly, that includes our Office Professional for our 30,000-plus computers on campus, Office Pro Plus for home use, so students can download a multiple copy of this, and that's been a real boon that we've heard from, from the students on that. Our enterprise version of all of our Windows operating systems, so getting everything to Windows 10, our support servers, our Windows servers, our SharePoint environment that we're really now taking off gangbusters to improve collaboration. It allows us to utilize all of the Office 365 suite of tools, but it doesn't mean we have to go to those. Our exchange email is all part of this, and then IT Academy, which allows our staff and our students to, to get online free Microsoft training. So that's all included in this at the cost of about $10 a computer per year, and I, and that's a pretty good deal.
Director Burke?
I wanted to say thanks for the, some of the dialogue that we've been able to have on this so far. Pricing looks pretty good. You're getting a great deal on Visual Studio, based on what we had to pay for it. Let's see. So just to clarify, this is essentially a license umbrella.
Yep.
And when you go into the breakdown of, of what's provided, there's a certain quantity of each unit, of each item with a unit price. Are we funded based on actual, or are we, do we provide them an estimate of what our consumption is, and that's what makes our total spend?
We're totally licensed based on the number of employees that we have, and there's a ratio of, you know, there's so much cost for the number of full-time educators, we have so much, and you divide that by three for the number of part-time educators and administrative staff, and it adds up to what Microsoft charges their reseller. And then what we do is we go out with an RFP and get this bid, so that the resellers then, who are adding on their one or two, three percent or whatever that they add on, it's usually very minimal, to negotiate this contract, to, to manage the contract and everything, and to provide us the licensing in the media, and that's where, that's where the, the RFP comes in. And, and again, we can utilize it on as many computers as we want. It's strictly bid, the- It's strictly, the cost that we pay is based on the number of employees that we have. And so if we go to a one-to-one program, if we want to give everybody in the district two computers instead of one, it's still part of the contract agreement.
That's great. And so then, is that a one-time thing? Or if our staffing level or our student level changes, do they re-norm it? Or is it-
We do a true-up. Yeah.
Annually, or quarterly, or?
I think it's, is it annually, or? I believe it's annually, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Pingam?
I believe I heard you mention the IT Academy. Is that part of the license? And about how much of the cost is that for this part of? Because you can get to the IT Academy through the Seattle Public Library.
Yeah, I, well, yeah, it's all or nothing. So these are all included. It's kind of like, you know, you get the full-meal deal here. And I know the costs are broken down on some of the sheets there where it talks about, you know, what the unit price is that they charge per license. The IT Academy, though, is, I think, pretty minimal on there. I'd have to look through really quickly and see which one that is, so.
Yeah, just curious, because University of Washington pulled out of that portion, so.
Yeah. Okay, for total, $1,200 or $1,300. And we do utilize it extensively, because a lot of in the classes. It's one of the things, coming from higher ed, one of the things that, that our business department of College of Business told us was that the, they had a lot of students coming in that didn't have the Microsoft skills that they needed. And so it was very important to provide these resources at the K-12 level so that they had access to Excel training and different things. And it also provides my staff training through server training and things like that. So all that's included, so.
Okay, move on to our next introduction. BECS IV Final Acceptance for Public Works Contract, P5054, with Iliad Construction for demolition work at Hazel Wolf K8 at Pinehurst Phase 1. Operations Chair?
This item was also heard on the 21st and moved forward to the board for approval.
Thank you.
Yes, Richard Best, Director of Capital Projects and Planning for Seattle Public Schools. As I've made you aware previously, your approval for final acceptance is required for us to file closeout paperwork to the various state agencies. Iliad Construction has completed the work associated with the Phase 1 site preparation at the, for the Hazel Wolf K8 project site. This work included the demolition of the existing building, some hazardous material abatement, and then installation of geothermal wells. We did issue a change order. It went from 36 wells to 72 wells on that site. So we literally doubled the amount of wells that was initially anticipated. That was approved in change order two. I'll draw your attention to that, because it was a significant amount. And you do have the final closeout document and the summary sheet in your board package. Any questions that I can answer surrounding this project?
See no questions? I'm gonna move on to the next item. PTA III Program Project Underspend Transfer to the Lashai Re Roof Project Budget. Operations?
Again, we were busy on the 21st of April. We had several items, and this was one of them. And we moved it forward to the board for approval.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. I get caught up and forget. This one was actually for consideration. Because if I remember correctly, there were, we didn't have completed documents?
We didn't have the bids opened at the time-
Right, there you go.
-we discussed this. So we are asking for the board's approval to transfer $900,000 of BTA III underspend to the Lashai Re Roof Project. We are replacing the entire roof, this project, and contemplate replacing the entire roof. And this amount of funding is required for us to do that. As a facility standpoint, I made a note that it's, to the Operations Committee members, that it is a good practice to replace an entire roof if you can, you know, if you have the funding available. And our Facilities Department has made us aware that they have problems throughout the entire roof on this school. The roof was installed in 1988. That was a question that came up in the Facilities Committee, or, excuse me, in the Operations Committee. And the initial budget for this project was for significant repairs to approximately 25% of the roof. That was also a question that came up. The 2006 Facilities Conditioned Assessment Report was utilized for the BTA III levy, which was passed in 2010. This being the completion of really, in 2016, being the final year of the BTA III levy, using an older document to project when you're going to need to replace a roof or to make significant repairs to a roof is problematic. And so we're coming to the board to say we need to replace the entire roof, and we need this funding transfer. And you have funds available in your BTA III underspend.
Any questions? Thank you. Moving right along. BECS III and BECS IV Award Construction Contract, K5064, to Bates Roofing LLC for Lashai Elementary School Re Roof. Operations?
This one was heard on the 17th of March and moved forward for consideration.
And again, this was moved forward consideration because we had not bid the project. This will replace the roof at Lashai Elementary School. We will be awarding the contract to Bates Roofing. We are also recommending that the board, that the board approve alternates 1, 2, and 3. They are to replace the low-slope flat roof with a three-ply SBS modified. The steep slope is a asphalt shingle roof. They are to add a vapor barrier underneath the entire roofing system. And then they are to, one of the last alternate, 3, was to use plywood in lieu of orientated strand board.
Dr. Blafer?
I'll just note that the Operations Committee learned all that it needs to know about roofing and and not doing partial roofs in the future. So it was a great opportunity for us to acquire new skills.
Any more comments, questions? Okay, moving right along. BECS IV and PTA IV Award Architectural and Engineering Service Contract, P1436, to Basetti Architects for Modernization of Lincoln High School. Operations?
April 21st, the committee heard this and moved it forward to the board for approval.
Yes, we are recommending that the school board approve the agreement with Basetti Architects in the amount of $6,705,588. I do note that the recommended motion says plus Washington State sales tax. Washington State sales tax is not on top of that amount. So I will have that notation struck from the bar. This is for a professional service. You do not pay sales tax on professional services. I will also note, because the Operations Committee asked that I bring this to the board's attention, we did enter into an agreement with Basetti Architects to begin this work after they were selected last fall of 2015 to begin work so that we could be in a position to bring this contract to the board. We had them doing some site investigations on existing building systems. In addition, we had them begin to, their master planning effort. And we formed the ESTAC Committee to begin to look at the building design so we could begin to prepare some cost estimates. So you see an initial contract, and it is in your Board Action Report documents, for $233,481. And then we amended that contract so that Basetti Architects could help us with the general contractor construction management process, do some value analysis of their concept design. That amended amount was $49,447. The contract that we are entering with Basetti, we're looking at a construction value of 54, oh, excuse me, $54,330,000 for the maximum allowable construction contract for when the work is performed at Lincoln High School. The amount is consistent with the aggregate of the BECS IV and BTA IV capital levies.
Any questions? Director Harris?
Mr. Best, I don't know if you were here during public testimony when a pretty significant allegation of a conflict of interest was raised regarding Basetti Architects?
No, I wasn't here. I did not hear that.
Okay. Associate Superintendent Herndon, were you? And can you address that? Because we want to give respect to concerns that come up.
I'll have to go back and listen to the specific allegation. But, I mean, we watch pretty closely our conflicts of interest. So I would be surprised if there was. But I'll go back, and then we can get back to you either on Friday memo or by the next board meeting.
Or if you could have a conversation with Mr. Jackins, who brought that forward, and report back. Be very grateful.
Sure.
Thank you.
Dr. Peters?
Just to help you out on the focus, the specific question was, are any of the Basetti employees, the architectural firm employees, currently connected to the Landmarks Board? That's the question.
Connected to the Landmarks?
Yeah.
I'd have to look, not at this time that I'm aware of, but I'll, I could ask Basetti Architects, so.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any more questions? Dr. Burke?
The value of this contract, basically $6.7 million, is, you know, more than 10% of the total build cost. Is that fairly typical in terms of architectural expanses compared to total budget? Seems a little high, I was wondering.
No, this is actually, when you look at the modernization, if this was a new project, Director Burke, this would be a little high. But given that this is a modernization, it's a modernization of a historic structure. This is not high. And I will say that both the Office of Fiscal Management and the Office of the Superintendent of Public constructions provide guidelines to public agencies about architectural and engineering. Our fee structure is in accordance with those guidelines. And most architectural firms are aware of those guidelines. And so this fee structure is in accordance with that. There is some additional cost for GCCM work when you use that approach. Because in lieu of one or two bid packages, you are doing multiple bid packages. And so there's added work to the architect, but that's calculated in this fee, so.
Any more questions? Okay, the board is now immediately recessing the regular board meeting into executive session to evaluate the performance of a public employee and discuss potential litigation, which is scheduled for 30 minutes with an anticipated end time of, depending on what the 30 minutes, when we get in there.